This is the, I would like to call the Finance and Operations Committee meeting of the Board of Education to order Tuesday, May 8th, 2018, at the Nashville High School North Boardroom. We have three members of the Board of Education that are members of the Finance and Operations Committee. I can read the role. Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I'm here.
Ms. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Guarino is here. We have a quorum. Mr. Mosher is coming to us by telephone as he recuperates at home. Are you by yourself, Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Other members of the Board of Education, we have President Dottie Oden with us. We have Mr. Howard Kaufman and Doris Ho-Hensy. I want to remind everyone that we have three members of the Board of Education on the Finance and Operations Committee. So only members of this committee can make motions, second motions, vote on motions, or interrupt with point of order or point of information. So I want to thank ahead of time other Board members of this meeting for raising their hand and speaking through the chair. With permission, and everyone will get to speak. I'm looking forward to a good discussion on the agenda issues and a productive meeting. Other members here, we have Mr. Dan Donovan, Mr. Sean Smith, and other members of the administration, I believe. Mike Mahoney, Principal of Bicentennial.
Point of order.
Excuse me, you have to raise your hand, ma'am.
I did. Point of order.
Well, you raise your hand. I didn't see it, okay?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't understand, Robert's Rules doesn't preclude you from, we've come to meetings before, committee members and noncommittee members. And there's never been any tradition on our board to exclude Board members.
I'm not excluding any Board member. If you raise your hand to the chair and respect the authority of the chair, I will give you permission to speak. Thank you. So our first item on the agenda is playground improvements at Bicentennial and Fairgrounds Elementary. And we have the principal from Bicentennial, are you going to speak on this, sir?
I am. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but just to give you a brief synopsis of what's going on, one of our goals this year was the implementation of full-day kindergarten, and that does go beyond the academics in the classroom. Part of assimilating kindergarten into our schedule is understanding that they've never done certain things before in the half-day program. For instance, they've never gone to lunch, they've never gone to recess with lunch monitors and whatnot. We also came to understand that much of the playground equipment that we have at Bicentennial was installed when sixth grade still was at Bicentennial. So it wasn't appropriate for some five-year-olds to actually navigate safely what we currently have installed. So our wonderful PTO did two fundraisers this year specifically with the purpose of trying to purchase playground equipment that not only is appropriate for the kindergarten age, first-grade age, but also some adaptive equipment as well, as we do have preschoolers at Bicentennial, because we wanted everyone to be able to enjoy everything, because it is a school-wide fundraiser. So we did meet with Plant Ops and the playground, I think it was O'Brien Brothers that was the vendor, and they came over and we scoped things out about where things are going to go. And so we wanted to formally put that into the Board for permission to do so, with your blessing. We also want to install some fencing, because our soccer field does slope down towards the woods, and there's a culvert, and so soccer balls constantly go down into the thicket, so to speak, and kids are going down there into getting it. And we'd prefer they did not. So that's something else that was in the packet that we delivered for approval.
Thank you very much. Any of the members of the committee have any questions? Mr. Mosher?
I reviewed the information, and I concur wholeheartedly with the prospect of having the new gear installed for the safety of the children, to eliminate the possibility of somebody falling down into the culvert or something like that to get a soccer ball. So I think that the improvements are necessary and related, and as long as they are approved by us and the Board, I think that we should go ahead with them.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. We also have Fairgrounds Elementary included in this. Does anybody want to speak about that?
Hi, my name is Tanya Ackerman. I teach fifth grade at Fairgrounds. Mr. Harrington should be here, but I'll try to give a little information from what I remember. Give me some eyes here, Mr. Plourde, if I say something wrong. But what we did is we got a nice donation from a community organization last year, and we were able to put together our PTO and come with an idea of putting in some swing sets to Fairgrounds Elementary. Currently, we do not have any swing sets, and this will provide us with two long swing sets that includes four swings per the two of them. We want to put it in the backside, and it will also include some bark mulch. We have to put in some fencing to keep the bark mulch in, not fencing, like a retaining wall. Most of that stuff will be done by, I believe, city, or by him, right? Yes, okay. And I think the only thing that we had to do is put together some parents to help out with the bark mulch, a little bit of the landscaping. So we're just asking if you would be kind enough to approve it, and so we can get some swing sets in for those, you know, 600 or so kids that would really, really love it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions about this? Mrs. Oden?
I just have one question. I'm sorry. I have one question for Mr. Mahoney. I noticed the date on the quote is January 25th, and underneath it says, "Prices quoted a firm for 30 days only and are subject to review thereafter." Have you gone back to them? Is this going to be your final price, the price on the paper?
Was that particular, was one particular item there?
No, it just, on the quote is January 25th.
Right.
And in the notes underneath, it says, "Prices quoted a firm for 30 days only and are subject to review thereafter."
Right.
I was just wondering, have you ensured that this is going to be the final price? Have they gone up, or?
They have not really gone up. And the Board, when I say the Board, the PTO Board had voted and approved up to a certain amount to expend based on the fundraiser. So we're in very good shape in that regard.
Okay. I would just say to both of you, thank you for providing this for the kids. Play is extremely important, learning how to take turns, you know, waiting your turn. So thank you so much to your PTOs and to your donor who helped you out. It's very much appreciated and all for the benefit of the kids. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Porter?
And I want to agree with what Mrs. Oden said. This looks really well thought out, well planned, all age-appropriate, and a lot of fun. So I think that's great. Thanks for doing this.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, so Plant Operations has reviewed both these installations. They're pretty standard for what we do. We will certainly do all the installation of the equipment itself. Typically, we will provide the concrete and the sonotubes and the sand layer which goes underneath the bark mulch, and then the schools provide the bark mulch. I think that's all consistent with what they've got here. So I would recommend approval.
Okay. So if there aren't any more questions, I could entertain a motion to approve these two projects.
I move to approve both projects.
Okay. I'll second.
Second.
Oh, Mr. Mosher's second. On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. The motion carries three to zero. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, Mike.
Our second agenda item, Facilities Calendar Bid Responses. And we have a letter in our packet from Mr. Farrancoff. Is anybody here to speak on this? Mr. Donovan?
Okay, so we decided to take a look at the new facilities calendar. The one we've had is getting a bit, I'm not sure of the word, ragged a bit. It's not hooking up well with the other pieces of software we've put in as far as our athletic software and other things. And it's a little bit clunky, especially for outside users. So we've had it for about six years. We decided, we, meaning the management and IT, decided to take a look and do a RFP, RQ, for a new facilities calendar. So we sent that out back about three months ago, got back three responses, one of which didn't really meet the qualifications. So there were basically just two softwares that met all the qualifications. The IT department then went through their detailed analysis, which you can see in your package. We've got all kinds of different criteria, and I'm glad they did it and not me. And basically, they came down that there was one software, ML, was by far the winner. ML stands for Master Library. That one graded out much better than the other competitor. So basically, they would like to move forward with the purchase of Master Library. It'll probably be purchased in next fiscal year, and we will probably work to implement it over the summer. So I guess that's the, any questions on the information?
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. I'm going to go to Mr. Mosher first, because I couldn't see if he has his hand up or not. He might have a question. Mr. Mosher, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't have any questions. I do have a comment. I reviewed the paperwork on it, and I agree with Mr. Farrancoff's evaluation of it, and I recommend we purchase it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Oden, did you have a question?
I did have a question. It says, "One important determining factor was cost." I don't see a price on here.
Yeah, when I took a look earlier, the price is, it's actually under $10,000, so it didn't officially have to come forward. But since we talked about the quote in advance, I figured somebody might ask about it. So it's $9,250 for this one. The other one was more expensive than that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Oden. That was a question I was curious about. But I'm curious why, I mean, I wish Mr. Farrancoff were here, because the question I have has to do with this version of Microsoft that we're running. If we're running an Exchange server, I know it has a sophisticated conferencing system where you can reserve rooms and things like that. So I noticed that there's no evaluation of either any Microsoft product that might be on our system. I don't know if we have an Exchange server, but, I mean, one of my previous jobs, we worked with the Microsoft Exchange server, so I'm a bit familiar with it. So I would like to have that question answered.
I can ask him. I certainly can't answer that myself.
Did he evaluate anything that's built into the operating system for scheduling? Because they do enterprise scheduling, so I would think what they do for an enterprise could perhaps be used for an educational environment. Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question? Ms. Porter?
Is there any training that has to go along with this, or is it?
Oh, yes. Yeah, no, there'll be training when we go and set it up in the first place. There's, I think, I think a couple of days in-house training for us. And then it's one of those things that I think after you spend a couple of days with it, it's fairly straightforward.
Thank you. If there aren't any more questions regarding this, Ms. Porter, did you have another question?
No.
Okay.
I move to approve the purchase of Master Library.
Okay. Ms. Porter moved to approve the calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Mosher. On the motion? Point of order. You don't get point of order, okay? You don't interrupt. I thought I made that clear at the beginning of the meeting. Okay? All right. What is?
Let me just say, you should include the price in the motion, which is not there. I'm trying to help you.
You can raise your hand and ask permission.
I did.
You can, no, you didn't. You said point of order, and you interrupted, okay?
That's how it's done.
And I asked, excuse me, I asked if there were any other questions, okay?
So may I raise my hand now?
Yes.
So I, just for clarification purposes, when making a motion, especially one that includes money, the motion should include the price. In this case, it's known. So you may want to amend your motion or take it back. I mean, there's a process to do that.
No, thank you for saying that. I thought that since it was under $10,000, and Mr. Donovan said he didn't really even need to come before the Board, that it wouldn't be necessary.
If I may answer?
Yes.
That may in fact be true, but I can guarantee you someone at the Board will ask you how much. And when it's included in the motion, it just saves time, and it's clarification. That's what it does. It's just a better way of doing it. I'm trying to help you, Ms. Porter, that I'm not trying to be...
I understand.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Guarino, could we please include the price of $9,250?
Sure, we can amend the motion.
Amend it to include that, please?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Sure. So the motion is to approve the Facilities Calendar Bid Responses. What was the number again?
$9,250.
$9,250. On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. The motion carries. And that brings us to the Brentwood lease update discussion. And Mr. Donovan is going to have a brief, just a brief discussion on this, I believe.
Yes, I just, I wanted to put this on the agenda to sort of update where we are with that and to suggest that we probably need to have another small meeting, maybe before another Board meeting or something. I got it about a week ago. I haven't had a chance to fully review it myself. I've sent it down to the city for them to take a look at it, and they're working on it. They've yet to get back to me yet. So it'll probably take, let's say, another, I don't know, week to 10 days or so to review the lease. There may be some questions back and forth, so it may take us a month. But in reality, if the lease is pretty satisfactory to both parties, I would like to move forward rather than waiting until the next Finance and Ops Committee, which won't be until June, and then later on in June get it approved, because Mr. Smith's going to need some time to, his number-one project this summer, assuming we move forward with this lease, will be getting that space ready for the students come the end of August, early September. So I just wanted to let everyone know that the lease is here, it is being reviewed, and that hopefully we will, like I said, we may want to have a quicker meeting than waiting until next month for the Finance and Ops.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Donovan. Mr. Mosher, do you have any questions or comments on Brentwood?
I have one question. When you are done reviewing the lease, would it be expeditions for us to put it before the full Board rather than run it through Finance and Ops?
That's a possibility, or we could, I think what we've done in the past, Mr. Mosher, is maybe if there's, let's say, a Board meeting at 7:00, we'd have a meeting at 6:30, just to review, or any could ask questions, and then it could be brought up that night, hopefully.
Yeah, because usually that's a pretty straightforward thing, to get the lease reviewed quickly and voted on. So I think that would be a good idea, to put it before the full Board in a short meeting beforehand.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions regarding Brentwood? Okay, I'm going to move on to the next agenda item, which is security improvements. And I believe that a non-public was recommended, so we should entertain a motion to go into a non-public session. And I forgot to bring my list of RSAs. I, is it I? Okay. All right, well, we can get it right later on, so, yes, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. As a point of order, I might suggest, it's totally up to you, you're the chair, you may want to do the items five, six, and seven first, so that we can conclude that business, then go into non-public. I mean, because you're going to have to go in and come back anyway, I guess. It doesn't really matter.
Right, it doesn't matter. Yep. Okay, so I'm going to move that we go into non-public under RSA 91A32I. Seconded by Ms. Porter. On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. So we're under non-public right now?
Okay, Mr. Guarino, I move to seal the minutes from non-public. Is that what you wanted?
Yes, I second the motion.
From pursuant to RSA 91A3, what is that, three? Three.
Okay. On the motion to seal the minutes, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. So the motion carries unanimously. So now we are back in public, and we're going to go to item five, which is fiscal year 18 March transfer reports. Mr. Donovan?
Okay, we have, I believe, five transfers. I'll just run through them quickly. This is the time of year where you're starting to see people move funds around in their, from their various accounts. So the first, the first one is from the Curriculum Department, and they're basically aligning budgets for the year-end spending. The big item in there, you'll notice, is $33,000. They're just basically moving that from miscellaneous equipment to computer equipment, which is just getting more exact with their, with their charging. So, and they're taking some of their supplies money, and they're using it towards books. So all these items will run through the process. This is just adjusting their budget. The next one is from the Athletics Department. Ms. Gingras is taking some monies from the monies we received from the, both hockey programs have shared programs, co-op programs with another school, so they pay for half the program. So the cost of the, she's just moving some of that money to the cost of the ICE rental time. The next one is also from Nashville Athletics, and she's just moving funds within accounts that she controls the revenue, just for straightening out her budget. The fourth one is Amer Street School, and they're taking some funds from Ed Supplies and Computer Equipment and moving it to conferences. I'm not sure what the conference is. I could find out if necessary. And the last one is moving $1,000. This is in the Adult Ed Special Revenue Fund. And basically, they didn't have a Supplies account in there, so they're taking it from advertising and creating the Supplies account.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Mr. Mosher, I'm going to go to you first, if you have any questions or comments on the transfer report.
No, I find them all in order, and I think it's time to move them up.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay. Ms. Porter?
Okay, I move to accept the fiscal year 18 March transfer report.
I second the motion. On the motion to approve the fiscal year 18 March transfer report, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. The motion carries three to zero. Our next item is the fiscal year 18 March financial report. Mr. Donovan?
You'll notice on the agenda that the seventh item was the year-end forecast. Due to the tremendous amount of time in the last week and a half I've spent on the whole teacher retros and new, I have not had the time to finish the forecast. So I don't have the forecast, so what I will do, I'll bring it next month for sure, but I will run through the financial report, the financial report through, it says March here, it actually should be April. So, and what I'll do is, this month, why don't we take a look at the second of the two reports that you have in your financial package? Typically, I use the first one, but this one can get you sort of familiar with a month-to-month look at things. So it's page one of five, and it's the report that shows the costs by month. So I'll run through this quickly. So basically, wages full-time were 72.4% through at this point. If you take a look at April, you see the full-time wages were 6.1 million. Basically, you want to compare that to other months that were like April, which were months that had four weekly payrolls and two bi-weekly payrolls. Those would be February and December, and you can see those amounts were 6074 and 6183. So it's right in the middle there. That tells you that there's nothing really out of whack for the month. And same with wages part-time. They're lower than March, but March had the extra week of pay. It's a little higher than some of the other months, but not significantly. And as I go through, this is obviously where most of the money in our budget is, in these wage lines. So I've begun the process of breaking out all the wages by the different groups and being able to forecast it that way. So I'll show more detail next month when I go through the forecast. Okay, overtime regular, that 51300 account, you can take a look there. It's $27,000, sort of back down where it used to be in June. So we're hoping that that sort of stays the same. The seasonal wages is, that's, Sean Smith has temporary people covering for some of his staff that are out on, for various reasons. The next one, wages per diem, you can see that's as high as it's been all year. That's the sub-line. It covers continuing subs. It also covers daily subs. But April's probably, is the first month, we didn't have any snow days, so all the scheduled school days are actually in place. So the number is higher. The number tends to, when you look at it over a year-to-year basis. The sub-number is higher at the end of the year per month than it is at the beginning of the year. Don't know the exact reason for that, but it's just a trend that we typically see. And the one other item I'll mention in this group is the longevity. You see those minus numbers back in January. There was an error where a lot of people were paid twice their longevity amount, twice. These negative amounts is we're getting all that money back. We've contacted everybody. Everyone has agreed to pay it back, either done on a lump sum over a period of a few periods. Yes?
Mr. Donovan, did you give them a timeline to pay it back?
Yes, they'll pay it, it will all be paid back within this school year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's the labor accounts, and in a total, you can see, total, we're 72% spend. We have two more months. But the one, that looks a little better than it is, because, keep in mind, teachers are paid through the summer. So you're going to have July and August payments. So you're gonna have July and August payments that need to be reverted back and charged against this line item. Okay, the fringe benefits, as I've said, those are mostly, the first three line items there, those are all city costs. City does the budgeting for them, city does the charging. If there's, if they're not budgeted high enough, city will come up with the money to cover them. If there, if there's money left over, the city takes the money, so. Not gonna be a lot of savings one way or another there. The next set of accounts, the 53 series, professional and technical services. Most of these accounts are relatively small, most of them are pretty much online where we expect them to be. The one account there, 53614, pupil support services, that's $132,000 this month. That's the OT and PT services for the special needs students. So we're 82% spent, we got another six weeks or so for those students coming in, so I think, I think we'll be okay. But they'll probably spend, spend all that money, they typically do. Okay, then on, onto page two. Okay, page two, property services. Take a look at electricity, we're at 74%. Ran some numbers based on sort of what we spent last year in May and June. If we spend what we spent last year in May and June, we should have an excess in this account, which I'm gonna need for something else, but, so that's, that's running fine. Heating gas, you can see the numbers actually slightly higher in April than it was in March, but for the most part, a lot of these bills are a month behind. Typically, you know, you, you get your bill at the end of the month, it shows up the month before. But it looks like the heating gas, with the low rates we've had and putting in new, new systems in our schools, we should have a, a reasonable savings there. I'm, I'm gonna guess it's gonna be potentially up to a couple hundred thousand. So we're looking good on that account. The water account looks fine, year-to-date, there might be a little bit of money left over, not a lot, but in pretty good shape. So on all the utilities, look pretty good this year, better than, than most of the other years. Then you go through the maintenance accounts, HVAC, building maintenance, these are things that Mr. Smith deals with. I have yet to have him overrun the total of all his dollars, so I'm convinced he will not do that again. Right, Mr. Smith? Okay, and then you notice the 54899 rentals, that number's high this month, $31,000. That includes the, some costs related to the graduation, and I think it also included the costs, we paid one of the, the ICE rentals for the hockey team, so that goes there. Okay, the, one account, next group there, other services, telephone, telephone voice, it's pretty much spent everything. It's, last year, we spent $110,000, and this year, we've already spent $110,000, and there's two months left. Frankly, I'm surprised by that. So I gotta, I gotta dig in deeper to that, talk with, I expected telephone voice to go down with our new phone system, not to go up, so I don't, I don't understand it, plain and simple. It's not gonna be way over, it's not that big an account, but I will spend some time on that and hopefully have a better answer for you next time. And then, sort of in the middle, you can notice the advertising, advertisements.
Yes, I, I guess, I'll just channel George Farrington, being one of his favorite topics. So when, do you recall when the city, what, what happened is, we had our own system, and now we're part of the city's system, and it's all internet-based and just for background for people. So all the phones have been switched over and everything else. So we thought we were actually gonna be, I mean, we thought most of that was going to go away, if, if I recall correctly. I mean, what, what's your recollection?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think most of it was going to go away, I think it, because it includes, this line item includes sort of the internet costs and things.
Okay.
So that's in there. So it wasn't gonna all go away, but we expected the number of copper lines, so to speak, to go away. I don't know if they've had, based on the numbers, it doesn't look like they have.
Still paying for them.
Yes, so I think we need to, you know, figure that out. But the phone system as a whole, the city is still not fully implemented. City Hall, for example, is still on the old phone system, so that might have something to do with this, I don't know, but.
Thank you.
I'll look into it. Okay, advertising, you can see in the last three months, that's when most of the advertising happens, and that's for sort of the senior-level positions, principals and directors, and for our job fair and things like that. So those are the three months that it's usually higher. We typically don't budget enough in that account, but it doesn't really go over by a significant amount, but it does typically go over. Okay, and then there's a, a lot of other smaller accounts, and then I bring to my favorite account, 55694, tuition out of district. As you can see, through, through April, it's 97% done, this account, and you can take a look, it's about $500,000 a month, so we expect another million bucks to hit that account, and it's gonna be about 5.5 million, so it's gonna be well over budget. So I'm hoping that some of, I'd be able to use some of those utility accounts, and I'm hoping they'll, we'll see if there's some extra money in some of the labor accounts in the attrition. But that, I'll have a better answer for you on that, that's obviously a very key thing, next month, when I'm finished with the forecast.
Ms. Timmons?
Mr. Donovan, you skipped over 55600, and I have a question about that, printing, which is $51,450. It is seen to be awfully high. Any way that we can almost go paperless to get this down? Because that is outrageous.
Most of these printing costs are for items that the school needs. It's, I, I don't think we can go paperless for a while. I mean, I, I could give you a breakdown of some of the things, I don't, not off the top of my head, but a, a lot of the printing of forms and things like that, that, that are used. We've tried to use, take a lot of the printing and move it internal and use our own copy machines, but there's certain items that we just can't do that with. It's cheaper to go outside.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Oden, and then Ms. Hohensie.
I was wondering, does that include the math program that we sent out to have printed that line item?
If we send it out, yes, it does. These would be the outside costs. It wouldn't include anything we do internally, though.
Okay, no, and I think they sent it out last year, I think Katie Sad came to the board and presented that. Thank you.
Ms. Hohensie.
Thank you. I was wondering, back on the previous page, the legal services, could you explain what that's for? I know that we have an attorney on a.
Yeah, that's Mr. Clausen, $32.50 a month.
So why does it vary, vary, go up and down?
Well, occasionally, it might be something else, a special ed attorney or something, but most of the costs in there are, for example, it's $6,500, that means that's $32.50 times two, just happens to be, the previous month was $32.50. He was $27.50 prior to that, and then the $8,750, there was probably, I'd have to go back and look, but there was probably another attorney in there, maybe for special ed or something. We do occasionally go out and use this, an attorney for special ed situations.
Okay, 'cause he doesn't specialize in that area at all?
No, he doesn't, he doesn't work on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman? Thank you. Just, when I got on the board, Ms. Timmons, I, I zeroed in on the photocopying piece of the budget, and Mr. Donovan, we were on finance, and was kind enough, this committee might be interested in that report of photocopier use within the buildings and how that's managed, it's an interesting thing. We do over 26, I have no, that's an old number, I'm sure, 26 million photocopies a year. So we, we are quite the printing shop, and I think Mr. Donovan has gone, done a really good job working with his, that, I'll just call him a consultant, 'cause I don't know how else to approach it, who manages the machines, keeping them current, et cetera, et cetera. But I still wonder about color copies, I'll just let you know about that.
Well, yeah, and I, and I do get an update each month from the company. Mr. Kaufman's right, it's over 26 million, it's 27 million copies a year. Spend some time in a school, you know, the teacher runs down, makes, you know? Ms. Porter can speak to that, as, as Ms. Oden could too. When I go in to see my wife occasionally, I'm sent down to the copy machine too, 'cause I can actually do that. So, yeah, it's, it's a difficult thing to control, we have very good pricing, and that report will come out at the end of the school year, so it's not too far off, so probably over the summer, Finance and Ops meeting will, will have a, an update on the report. But there is, there's a lot of copying going on.
Thank you, I was just curious.
Ms., Ms. Timmons, do you have a question?
No, that was it, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, I wanted to follow up on that special ed number. At the rate we're tracking, we're about 500 over, if I recall.
We'll be about a million over the.
A million over at the end of the year?
Million over where we are now, yeah, which is about 800, 900,000 over the budget, yeah.
Okay. How does that track, I know the budget that we just passed, we were, what, 300?
Yeah.
But that was based on the current year, didn't include this extra 800?
Sure, we're still, the budget that we have, the fiscal year 19 budget, still doesn't have as much as we're gonna spend this year.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mosher, do you have any questions or comments regarding the financial report?
No, I follow this, you know, from month to month, and over, it's obvious, I see normal changes in it, but I have no other comments.
Thank you, sir. Are you, are you?
Just, almost done.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's fine. And then page three, you'll notice supplies and materials, most of these are either the, most of these funds are spent either by plant operations, obviously, electrical plumbing, supplies like that, or by the schools, and it's the school's money, the allocations that we give them. So that's where they tend to budget most of it, for example, educational supplies, things like that, that's where they spend most of their money. So they manage those, they're at the point now where this month, the month, month of May, they'll be spending up most of their money, they need to spend everything by the end of May, we might give an occasional, you know, offer to, to spend a little bit more in June, but for the most part, they'll spend that, so this number will tie down. So the only other thing is, if you notice, number 68, where it says other expenses, indirect costs, is a minus 138895, that's a very good thing, because year-to-date, we're at $223,000. And so we're almost at budget, and we'll have more coming in. What that is, is when you manage grants, the federal grants, you get to take a percentage, which is defined early and during the process, it's defined on an annual basis, actually, and that's the cost of us managing the grants. So it comes back to us as a credit, and it helps our budget. So hopefully, Glennis Chappett is the person who tracks all this, this was a big catch-up for her, but there'll be more of these credits coming, and hopefully, that will also be helpful to me in balancing the full budget. So other than that, like I said, my, my concern is the same thing, it's been my concern all year, which is out-of-district tuition. I think most other accounts are in, in good shape, and we will manage them through the last couple of months.
Thank you very much, Mr. Donovan. Are there any other last comments or questions about the financial report? Ms. Hohensie?
I have one comment to make.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we'll let Mr. Mosher go, and then Ms., Ms. Hohensie. Go ahead, sir, Mr. Mosher.
Yep, I have one comment to make, and it's, thank God for Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mosher. Ms., Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you, I just wondered if you could explain the last page, debt service, what are we paying interest and principal on, and budget adjustments? I don't understand how we get expense transferred to other funds, it doesn't add up across, I mean, that, is that $347,000 that we have to use towards out-of-district placement there?
No, the debt service is, once a year, we, we have our copiers on a lease, so that's what that is, it's each August, I believe, we make the payment, so that's the principal and interest on the payment. I think it's a five-year lease, we're two years in or three years in. And the budget adjustments, what those are, is two things, one of which is the facility rental, so those funds come back and reduce here, and the other one is the, the athletic fees. So that's what those two are. Those numbers in June, they're not, I mean, we're not at June yet, so, oh, I, sorry, I have the wrong, I have the wrong sheet in front of me. Had last year's sheet. Yeah, so that's, that's what, the expense transfer to other funds is, it's one, it's, it's probably one of the facility rentals, typically, we make it. I'll double-check on the $12,000, that usually doesn't hit until June, but those are the two things that are budgeted in that line.
Okay, but what is this, $347,000, is that money that we'll have use of?
Well, that's the combination of the, of the, the athletic fees and the facility rentals, yes. So those are monies that come in. We, we track them in a different account, and then we move them into the operating budget at the end of the year.
Okay, 'cause the, the line item doesn't add up across, well, how we got to 347 from two $12,000 entries, that's what's puzzling.
That, that's under the column available, year-to-date available, so it's not, it's not being used up.
The actual number's the 12402, that's the only thing that adds up. It's kinda funky the way it is on the report.
It is a little bit. Thank you.
Okay, so seeing no more, no more questions, I don't think we have any more business before this committee.
Do we have to have a motion to accept that?
Oh, I don't think we usually.
Oh, okay.
We don't usually entertain a motion to accept it. So I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Mosher. On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Mosher?
Yes?
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes, and this, the meeting is adjourned at eight, I'm sorry, 7, 7:52 PM. Thank you.